We got to chat. Ready? Monday, April twenty second. Hey, we're gonna start here, okay? Monday, April twenty second, twenty nineteen, regular animals of city council. It's city hall council chambers, one point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings, April eighth, twenty nineteen, regular council meeting and April fifth, twenty nineteen, special council meeting.
So moved.
First by Rich, second by Cody. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Four point oh public hearings, none. Five point oh presentations, five point ones, swimming pool evaluate, evaluation, water technology incorporated. You're up.
Oh, you don't have plug in yet, sorry.
No, I didn't, wasn't sure when you want to be plugged in, so.
Yeah, you can plug in anytime. I just need to know when you have the power.
Harless. First of all, I'm Matt Cravie with Water Technology out of Beaver Dan, Wisconsin. Thank you for having us down. Thanks Tyler for inviting us. We're here to, at Tyler's invitation, and have been in discussions with him about conduct, the potential to conduct an overview or a facility evaluation for your swimming pool, but first of all, just to give you a little bit of history of water technology. We're in, located in Beaver Dan, Wisconsin. That's about, oh, forty-five minutes northeast of Madison on one fifty-one. So for me, it was a get on one fifty-one and drive here, for all practical purposes. Been in business since nineteen eighty-three, and we work in all fifty states. We cover everything from small projects like filtration replacements or pool repairs, all the way up to doing new water parks and things like that. You can see there, our makeup here is, public entities is about forty, what was she at, forty-five percent. Resorts such as the Great Wolf Lodge, it's a repeat client, is twelve percent. Water parks such as Yaz Island over in Abu Dhabi or Aquatic in Orlando make up another, you know, twenty percent, depending on the year. So basically, if it's water, we touch it and enjoy doing it, okay? Little bit about water technology, it's our only focus. We are not an engineering or an architecture firm that, that does other things and then does, happens to do pools. We specialize in pools. We consult with a lot of architectural and engineering firms all over the country and helping them do swimming pools. About myself, I'm a former age group and college swimmer. I'm licensed as an architect. I also have a degree in civil engineering. Been with water technology for twenty-two years and still enjoy doing it. Matt, the slide before, we do about a hundred and fifty projects of pools a year. That's just our average. We're about sixty strong. Lot of, I'm gonna talk today into what you're looking at in terms of evaluations. We do about, and it depends, but between twenty-five and a hundred evaluations a year. Now, what is, this thing here is just the ones I've done in the past five years. Now, what does an evaluation mean? What is, what does it accomplish? First, what it doesn't accomplish. If we do an evaluation and you put a shelf, it's useless. Don't hire us. It's a waste of your money. What it does do is it establishes a baseline at a point in time of what is the current condition of your facility. And I'll walk through what, what we do with these evaluations or what they consist of. Couple things I do want to tell you about how we think about our evaluations. We don't come in with the, with the idea of you should or shouldn't do something. We react to what you have as a condition of your facility. So I can't tell you right now, and I've been by your facility this afternoon, and I went over and looked at it through the fence. I don't have an impression of it in terms of whether it should be reused or not. I don't come into it with, with that or here there's anybody else at Water Technology. It's really about what is the condition of the facility. We look at it, we look at it for a couple of major areas. First of all, does it meet code? Is it current for code? And there are some implications if it isn't. What is, is it safe? In other words, do we see things that, that we recognize as being unsafe? Those are the two major priorities. Those should, you know, those are really easily recognizable. Then we start looking at it for, how is it to maintain? In other words, are there things that could be done that would make it easier, either easier to run or we think that are going to be a problem in the near term, and then we look at what's some of the long-term issues. We identify those and then we present an allocation or a budget allocation for what we think it would take to solve those kind of problems. Little bit about Iowa projects. We've got about fifty-four projects, I think, in Iowa dating back to when this company, when our company was founded. Gonna go through a very brief study. Luther College, five lane lap pool. And had a donor that, that came to them and said, you know, we could, we need to do something. So did a study, looked at a couple of different options. Ended up with, obviously still a lap pool because they have competitive swimming. But this particular pool is, is a semi-stretch twenty-five yard pool. So you can swim lanes across, obviously, eight lanes. But it can also be set up with some shallow water lanes on the far end so that they can continue their community programming for swimming lessons, learn to swim programs, infant swim, things like that. The bulkhead there, the white thing that's stretched across, actually can move. And you can move that, if you actually inflate it with air, floats, and then you can move it to increase the number of lanes. Now, the lanes further away from where this picture is taken is, are shallow lanes. And again, those are for more community programming. The lanes to this side are deeper lanes. You can see the starting platform to the right. But for a practice, for instance, or for a, for a large community club team, which there are, they move that bulkhead to one end, the whole team can practice at one time. So what's the process? The first thing is assessment. Find out what you have. What's the value of it? Are there things that are worth retaining? I would say that in our studies, it falls in about thirds, meaning about a third of the, a third of the studies come back and with some, with a project that is just redo some things. There are some relatively simple things that can be done. About a third of the projects involve renovations and probably, well, I'd say about twenty percent probably involve replacements. Just based on the study and what's found and how do you move forward. That doesn't say what yours is or wouldn't be, and you always find outliers. I have a project in, in just south of DC right now for Dulles, Dulles South Recreation Center that we did a study and found that their filtration, they were having trouble with their filtration. We actually ended up tearing the filter apart to find out why and found out that their filter, which was less than a year old, didn't actually have all the elements in it that it was supposed to. And so they weren't getting their filtration rates. We're still looking at what we're going to do about that. But basically, it's go through, assess the facility, and then the second part of the assessment is to assess your program. In other words, we have a pool, we've lived with it for a long time. What are we doing with it? In other words, how are we using it? And then what do we want to use it for? Is it meeting all the program requirements, current program requirements of the community? That's part of the assessment in terms of looking at how we should move forward. And then it's evaluating your options, establishing objectives, and then deciding how to proceed. So, as an example, if, these are just some lists of objectives and goals. They aren't yours. Some of them may be yours, but that's one of the things that you want to sit down as a community and establish. So what are your objectives? Is it to increase your market share? Is it to increase attendance? Is it to add revenue streams? There are ways to do that. Is it to decrease costs? Most people, all of those. But again, it's looking at what you're trying to accomplish in establishing those goals and using those objectives to move forward and evaluate the decisions as you move forward. If you don't have that, it's very difficult to hone in on decisions when you're trying to make them. And just some of the ways we help do that in terms of studying what some of the pool areas are, what their depths are, pool temperatures, what some of the activities are, and what age groups those activities are applicable to. We'll spend a lot, we spend a lot of time talking about water temperature. A degree or two makes, can make a person comfortable or uncomfortable. When I was a young swimmer in high school, I was also a water safety instructor, teaching kids to swim in the pool that I trained in. Our coach kept the water cold, real cold. Trying to teach an infant swimming lessons in a cold pool was very difficult. I used to tell parents, bring your kids in in a T-shirt that's a size too tight. So it's real tight on them, but it helps retain body heat. But it's just understanding things like that and understanding what you're doing to help make those decisions. And then water depths are important, and what are the activities that you plan for water depths? And then also, just to look at, you have to understand, what does the water depth mean to different people? You know, the water depth to me, and, and a comfortable water depth to me, as a swimmer, is very different than a comfortable water depth to a four or five-year-old. So again, part of the process, especially as you start looking at capital projects, is how you control costs. First thing to do is to define your goals. And look at those goals, come up with a budget that's realistic to meet the goals, refine it. Go back and evaluate against your goals. Inevitably, what happens is, you know, ideas creep in, projects get bigger, they grow. You go back to your objectives and look and say, which of these are meeting my objectives, which of these are? As, as an old college professor of mine told me one time, part of my job is to help you define your needs from your wants. So, the process that we go through on an evaluation is the first thing we do if hired would be an onsite visual inspection. And what do we look at? We're gonna look at the pool. So we look at the pool shell itself. That can be looked at either in operation or empty. Doesn't matter. Our preference is to review a pool while it's in operation because then we can see motors running or pumps, hear the, the pumps running and things like that. But it can be done, when it's empty, we just don't have as much information on the pumps. We'll look at the pool gutter or the perimeter skimming system. The pool deck equipment, which includes springboards, slides, lifeguard stands, things like that. Then we look at the filtration equipment, or the circulation pumps, pool heater, pool filters, things like that. And then the chemical treatment systems. So our deliverable becomes an assessment report. And in that assessment report, we have findings, and then we take those findings and prioritize them in an order of one through four. One being things that are code or safety issues, two being things that are going to be a concern in the near term. Three are things that would improve the operations or maintenance, and four are things that would improve the facility in terms of patron enjoyment. Okay? And then we, cost prioritize each of those. In other words, we assign a cost to each of those tasks. That cost is presented as a range. The reason it's presented as a range is because at the, at the time we're giving you this report, it's almost an all-in-part menu. And depending on how you put things together, obviously, the more things you do, it's like buying a car. Buy a car by parts, it's really expensive to buy it all at once. It's a little cheaper. Obviously, the more things that get stacked up, you can hone in your pricing better because you have a better understanding of the, the overall scale of the work. I went through it really quickly. Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah?
Set. Nope.
Why not?
You're not a presenter.
When you're doing your evaluation, how long does it take? And who, and what process do you use, like talking to the Parks and Rec Board? Do you do anything with the city council? Do you do anything with the public? Where do you gather your information?
For, for the evaluation itself, it's, the evaluation is limited to a, an assessment of your present condition of your pool. So that process is, we go out and, and examine the pool. In other words, boots on the ground, look at it. And we have a, a very detailed analysis form. I, I do a lot of these. I live in fear of leaving a facility and forgetting something, so I wrote the form. We go through and, and take detailed notes. In terms of, of operations, we talk to staff and give an understanding of, from the operators, what are their issues? What's working, what's not? Because we can learn a lot about various concerns and things from staff and the municipal parents. Once we have completed the report, then we prepare the report, send a draft so that staff and, and who, you know, other interested parties can look through it, comment if necessary, and then if they miss, or we can come back and present the report. But our, our, the ask right now was for an evaluation, not for any design or anything like that, okay? And, and one other thing I want to point out is, we, we wrapped it that way, there is no obligation when, when we've completed this to you, to use us for future work. In other words, you know, we are not giving you this and saying, you have to use us to do anything else. We are simply giving you the tools necessary to make a decision as to, is it time to renovate it? Is it time to replace? Are we fine doing nothing? Did that answer your question?
Yep.
From the time you do the inspection till the report, like what's the timeframe?
He did ask that. I, I'm sorry, I got sidetracked. Typically, it's about three weeks.
Okay.
It, it, it depends. I will, I will tell you that, that now it's probably closer to four or five because spring in the pool business is busy. Once you get past Memorial Day, it's not as bad. But I average about three weeks.
Matt, with the pool being twenty-nine years of age this year, because it does, it is basically the end of a life expectancy of a pool, would it be better off to perform a reevaluation while it is fully operational?
Yes, in my opinion. I can then, which, the trade-off, there, there's always trade-offs. The trade-off of, of doing it after it's open is since it's full, you may miss things. I wouldn't say miss things, but it's, it's a little tougher to pick up things, some of the structural issues. But if there's, candidly, if there are structural issues, you can see them, even underwater. And most of the time, I end up swimming it. You know, I get it a little. The value of doing it when it's in operation is again, you get to hear the pumps. You, you can see the piping. If there's dilapidations in the piping or leaks, you can see them. So it's, I think you get a better report. I mean, your best report if you do it is you do it twice, but most people don't want to pay to have us come twice. So if I, if it was my pool, I would do it when it's in operation. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions for you? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
I don't know if I can ask a question or not.
Well, yeah.
Um, but you did say you're not tied with your company after the evaluation process.
Correct. Well, once we turn over the evaluation to you, and what will happen, I sort of mentioned thirds, but for instance, you know, I've done evaluations where, once they've been received, the community that received the report did probably half of the things on their own. In other words, they just went through the list and said, oh, this is a good idea. We're gonna do this, we can have our own staff do it. And that's fine. You, you have the information, it's, you know, designed to do it, but you have the information to say, this, you know, we recommend things. For instance, on one facility was a county water park essentially. You know, one of our recommendations was to improve the wayfinding and the traffic flow just coming into the facility because it was confusing. I drove in and went the wrong way down the street because the signage was, was complex. You know, they, they did things like that on their own. They then hired us three or four years later, when they got to need to do a filtration replacement that did require engineering drawings and things like that. But there'll be, there'll be things that are, like I said, pretty straightforward. You may find things that are, that are more serious that don't know. Did that answer your question? Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity. Just unplugged?
I haven't seen it.
Not right.
I don't think you blow anything up, okay?
I hope not.
Six point oh proclamation, none. Council action items, seven point oh, community metroman. Seven point one, discussion and possible action on service agreement with Water Technologies Incorporated for evaluation of aquatic components of Animals of Aqua Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty.
I, I have a couple of questions. First off, this is, was approved for our budget starting July one. So how are we gonna, are they gonna do that after July one, or how are we gonna handle that?
I mean, my, my thought process is we would do it once we get our season open and running, so billing would probably fall after that.
We want to make sure that, so. I want you to get paid, so. That's what I'm asking. Yeah, yeah.
Tyler, you already checked into that, didn't you?
So he will.
We just wanted to get the planning in place now.
And then how soon can they get here to start then? Knowing that they'll bill us later, or?
I mean, we, I think we'd wait until after Memorial Day when we get it filled.
Okay. It's after it's filled. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
And your who?
Tom Durden, building owner downtown. Rod, can I hit on a question for you? What is the average, in our climate average, life expectancy of the pool? Because everything I've talked about, like he said, was thirty years, we only have thirty years.
If you're talking, you're talking to us, not the presenter.
Okay, so what's the life expectancy of the pool?
Well, usually they're on around thirty years, I think.
Okay, so when they do their inspection, how are they gonna, are they gonna be able to check where the pipes are broken in the baby pool? How do they, how do they do that? Can, I, you know, so who's gonna answer my question?
I'm not a pool inspector, so I'm sure he has ways to do that.
You can't ask it, though, right?
Right.
Wow, okay.
Well, you have ways of checking to see if there are broken pipes and parts of the pool.
Well, I mean, candidly, if you open, you're gonna be telling me that they're broken before I ever get here. But, but, I, I, I mean, if it's okay, I'll respond to the question. Typically, we would, we would expect a pool shelved the last fifty years. That's not uncommon. It's concrete.
In this plan?
In this plan. I, we've got pools that are further north than this. What, what you are at the end of your useful life on is, and again, I haven't been in the pool, so I don't, I haven't seen it. But if they are original, probably your filters are at the end of their useful life. Certainly, pumps have probably been replaced several times. If you have a pool heater, I'll guarantee you that's been replaced a couple of times. Piping, I would have to look and see what is there. If it's cast iron, yes, I would suspect that it is in this condition. And in the type of soils that are here, I would expect that the, the cast iron piping that's near at the end of its useful life.
Yeah, because obviously, you know, the pool is broken. The baby pool is, from my understanding, knowing the functions, so obviously there's an issue there. So hopefully, this will be the start of getting the pool fixed, so the kids can at least get in there and play and be safe. So I hope sooner than later on this project. Thank you.
I take it I'm reading this correctly, and the cost associated with this service is nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars?
That is the amount that I have in, in the proposal.
Any, any further comments or questions? All those to have him do the inspection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Seven point two, discussion and possible action on resolution opposing House files seven, seven, three, formerly HSB one sixty-five at property tax reform bill under consideration in the Iowa legislature.
This has been, um, there's several concerning bills, I guess, going through the legislature, but this has been the most concerning in terms of what we've heard from the League of Cities and, um, there have been a handful of others that have passed resolutions, um, many more that are communicating with legislators directly, concerned on this bill, and I think, you know, I, I'm in communication with our, our representatives, but I think it's most effective when you guys can uniformly say that this is not gonna help cities as local elected officials, so.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Kay. But it's a roll vote.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Seven point three, discussion and possible action on third reading of ordinance, rezoning of property located in the Meadow Ridge Eighth Edition from eight R one single family residential to two R two multifamily residential.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by John. And it two's a roll vote.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Seven point four, discussion and possible action on third reading of ordinance amending chapter ninety-two and ninety-nine of the Animals of City Code to restrict the water and sewer rates to finance improvements to utilities infrastructure.
So moved.
Second.
First by Kay, second by Rich. And it two is a roll vote.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Seven point five, discussion and possible action on second reading of ordinance amending chapter seventy-four of the city code golf carts and UTVs and chapter seventy-five of the city code ATVs and snowmobiles to want to separate the regulation of golf carts from regulations of UTVs, separate the regulations of ATVs from the regulations of snowmobiles, and merge the regulations of ATVs and UTVs.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. And it too is a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Eight point O, public safety, eight point one, motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license. New Class C liquor license with catering privileges and Sunday sales, Las Trays de Gueva Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Nine point O, Public Works, nine point one, discussion and possible act should resolution approving the agreement and notice of to proceed with FL trapful for the wastewater treatment improvement phosphorus renewal project.
So moved.
First by Kay.
Second.
Second by Rich. And that also is a roll vote.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Ten point O, finance, ten point one, discussion and possible action on request by Dean Lund to purchase section of right-of-way adjacent to two eighteen-ish Main Street Cottage on Main. So, what did Adrian say about that?
Well, we've still got a couple of things to work out, just primarily the triangular piece that has an unknown ownership, uh. And so, uh, we would also have to determine exactly what the property description is for what we're selling, but the other issue which was the storm studios, we determined that run underneath the new, uh, does not run underneath the parcel that he's interested in buying, so, um, it's really just working with Adrian on, on getting the rest, uh, the unknown owner and the, the developing the property description. But before we get to that phase, I guess, wanted to get your general feelings, let Dean present or whatever, but.
Are you very experienced or not?
Yes, you're on the agenda.
We know about the rest of the nation.
Okay, start around a couple of years ago, I bought the flea market, I mean, storage garage. I started out climate control. It was working, but it wasn't working right at one. So we switched it over to the flea market after certain people to order the right climate control. Now we're drawing over a thousand people a weekend out there. Okay, I started the cottage domain probably twenty years ago. I owned the building, and the moment I lived with one of the runner, that was her green. She retired in December, but she didn't wanna sell the business to anybody, and she had plenty of people who would buy it. She has over seventeen hundred consignors, but she wouldn't sell a list or give it to me. But I knew the consignors of those were willing to have it. So I got a partner in there and took that owner, Diane West. She's doing an awesome job, very good, good accountant, hundred percent honest. Well, when Pat owned it, I wanted to add forty feet on the back of it, but she didn't wanna get any bigger. So, I went down there, I was gonna apply for billing permit. But then Keith Vernon said he bought a chunk of ground from the city, and he showed me where the stakes was. Well, I wanna buy additional right-to-head, just square it off. But there's one thing, the city owns a tree in there, a big tree. I can build up to the tree if I get denied, which I will. But I'd like to have the city sell me that chunk of property, and I'd take the tree down. It costs more to take the tree down than the property's worth, as Keith Vernon paid eight hundred and, eight hundred and some dollars, odd dollars for what he bought and squared it off. And I'd just like to square right off where he squared off and put an addition on there. I call it Cottage Domain, but it's a white picket fence now. She has people from all other states and has, uh, she's doing a daily count, she has seventy-five to a hundred people a day coming in there. And I'd like to buy this property and make it bigger and expand it.
So.
That's the story, I guess.
Jacob, was it just squaring it off, like, the property to the east of it, is that?
That, that's what he's requesting.
He told me where his property pin was.
Which is like almost to the asphalt, probably?
It's right on the edge of the asphalt within three inches, because we found it. I found my property pins over by the tree, they're about four feet south of the tree.
Well, does survey need to be done, just to?
It probably would need done, just because even though he buys the property, the for the building permit, we would still need a new property line established, so.
And in building the addition, he still would adhere to set the setbacks required?
Well, I, I haven't looked into that yet, but I mean, most likely he would need, again, the new, the, the property lines established to meet the setbacks.
And are the setbacks on downtown Main Street different than they are in a commercial area?
Well, they're, they're different in that, at least in the front, they have no front yard setback.
Right.
I'm not sure what the rear setback is. It might be, it might even be zero.
I would just wanna make sure we don't run into the same problem here as we did behind the one hundred block of East Main Street.
Right, and so, I mean, this, this wouldn't sell any of the actual alleyway, um, I don't think there was any.
It's the old railroad ru- right-of-way, it's not the alleyway right-of-way.
Yep.
But it's platted as an alley.
Well, there's.
Yeah.
It's platted as an alley.
It's currently part of the alleyway, but.
Yeah.
We, I mean, it doesn't.
The best thing that happened is when R E C put that pay brilliant back there. That was a big plus for the, the end of town.
I guess I just have a couple of questions regarding it. So obviously, we can identify where the right-of-way, or, excuse me, the old railroad right-of-way is, which was deeded to the city. But there's another partial pie shape that lays in there that we're not quite sure who the owner of it is.
That's the city. I checked with the Sessors. It's a chunk of ground you sold Keith Vernon, same chunk. I checked that out.
All right, well, what, the feedback I received even as of today, Dean, is he wasn't sure who the owner was, so I, I'm just going by that.
Yeah, I went down to the Sessors office in this court house before I even started this. And it says, un- enlisted, votes two. Well, Keith Vernon bought his chunk off of that old railroad right-of-way, and that's the same chunk I'm talking about.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm not sure of that, Dean, but, because looking at, what I'm looking at is where Keith bought, there's a distinctive line that comes through there, and then there's another triangle shape off of that.
Triangle shape too.
Right, but Keith did not have that triangle shape going through his. That triangle shape, if you look, go out to Beacon, says it's an unknown. But if it's an unknown owner, and there's been no taxes paid on it for years, then I don't know why it just couldn't be condemned or something of that nature if they haven't paid taxes on, and then we could do something with it.
And that's where I was going, Rich, is at some point, the city.
Public notice or something.
The city can gain ownership of it, which allows Dean either to purchase that as well and go extend further back. Uh, it could also give you the opportunity to maintain the setback requirements.
There is no rear yard setback.
Off of the alley?
Nope. Not in C one, there is not.
But also.
No front, no rear.
I think it would be beneficial for the city at this time to find out if there is any additional old railroad right-of-way that lays to the west of Dean's and bring it all together on this survey and find out if the adjacent property owners are interested in purchasing, because if we sell this off, that really does the city no good. The dirt to own is, yeah, it might as well be owned by the pro- the adjacent property owners. So I would like to capture all of that at one go.
Probably the rest of them would not be interested, because I've talked to a couple of them. Corp sign's the next one, and then there's up the road. They're not interested, it's just no railroad right-of-way that goes around here.
It, it, but it would be in the city's best interest to reach out and, and verify if they have any interest or not.
I've checked with them, I've got Corp sign and Keith Vernon's signature.
I think that's where the city should also check, Dean, is what I'm saying.
It's kind of the job of the city.
Yes, it is.
Just to make sure.
Yep.
But as, as far as making any, putting the ball in motion, at, at this time, I would be in favor of pursuing the sale of the property Dean is questioning, uh, to him.
And I would like for us to review the purchase agreement this time, or it goes past the city, onto somebody else.
There's a lot of downstream things that need to occur yet before we sell this, but let's, let's pursue, like, putting the ball in motion.
If you don't wanna sell it, that's okay too, because I'm gonna apply for a building permit tomorrow and build it up to the tree. I'm not gonna wait a month or two or three, you'd have to give me a time factor. I mean, be honest with you, I mean, right up front.
Well, it's up to the attorney and what he can find out, right? I mean, tell us, it could.
I mean, what are we talking time factor?
Without a survey having been done yet, you can't even buy a residential home without, and close in less than thirty days. And that's something already.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something already ready to go. You'd have to have the abstract brought up, there's like, this could take a couple of months, Dean.
Well, then I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested.
Not that we're holding anything up.
No, if, if you, if you can't, if you're saying a couple of months, I will apply for my building permit, which I was gonna do to start with, and then I'd have to come down and see if I could buy that. Now, I mean, if I can get the okay to buy it, take the tree down, I'll pay for the survey. Now, you know.
The, the big, the big holdup on that could be that little triangle piece, because if it's an unknown owner and we do have to condemn it, that's gonna take time. I mean, that, that, that's unfortunate, but that could be the biggest holdup, is that little triangle.
It's like we all wanna work with you and wanna make it happen.
But I'm not gonna wait till July or August to add on that, that building, to be honest with you.
Okay, and.
Cause I got, I got a man and an hour and a fella.
And we have to follow our rules.
I understand that.
Well, we'd have to give public notice on that, uh, piece, since there's no owner, to obtain it. And that would probably be thirty days of public notice.
Well, and then we also have to have a public hearing for the sale of the ground.
And then you'd have to have an abstract created.
Well, it'll take Adrian a while to research that ownership through this.
So to answer your question, like, we got it done in ninety days? Yeah, we got it done in ninety days? Yeah.
Then the heck with it, I don't care about, then I'll be down here hollering about the tree taken down, because of the, you know, because it's gonna go right up six foot from the tree and the high lines have been cut out of already, and now we got cable and high lines in the tree, and we got Alliance Energy and the cable company, it'll be on your door.
Well, it kind of feels like we wanna work with you, but we're not gonna be able to do it fast enough for you.
Be honest with you, if you know me, I am not gonna wait three or four months, because I can add whatever my billing permit says, and I will do that. And like I say, I mean, if it's down the road, if I build, I'm probably done building it.
Well, and I appreciate your honesty, because I would have hated to see us spend the money on the attorney and get a surveyor, and then all of a sudden, thirty days from now, you come in here not happy.
Be hon- be honest with you, if Dean's have a survey to sell Keith Vernon's off, I think it's an additional add to that survey that'll work.
I'm not sure how the surveyors do it, I understand each plan.
The property that I've sold is just a quick claim deed to add on, it don't demand another survey.
In a development.
About three times.
Yeah, in a development, correct?
Correct.
Okay, this would be an individual survey, I think.
I'm sure you would, I mean, I don't know, it's.
There's still about a gray area, there's two, who owns a partial?
The survey, the survey's the minor portion of this.
Yeah, well, we know who owns it, it's the city's property, cause I checked down to the Sessors office before I even started this.
Unfortunately, there's where we're at.
That's where I'm at, too.
Well, we can't make it happen.
The city wouldn't wanna sell it to get taxed for it.
I, I think this, I, the city is interested in selling it.
Uh, yeah, I think we're all.
The contractor is not interested in waiting.
No, no, I'm not. I mean, I wanted, I wanted to start this three or four weeks ago, and that's been a week long. I had to wait on the, make sure where the sewer went underneath the building, and I've waited as long, but, I mean, I'm not gonna wait any longer.
Understanding.
Okay, well, maybe you'd like to buy it later for parking.
I don't need it for parking. I don't need it, I got all that back there anyhow.
Oh, okay.
Due to R E C, and I, and I'm parking, it ain't a problem. And a lot of people use that back there. Back three fourths of the people to pull up that shop use the back door.
All right, sorry we can't work with you. Well, it, it takes time to get those things done.
Right.
I mean, time, you know, a month, but not when you start dragging all that out.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
So.
No action.
All right. Ten point two, discussion and possible action on resolution setting the date for the public hearing amending the current city budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
First by Rod.
Second.
Second by Rich. And it's a roll vote.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Did we say, say what day that was gonna be?
Yeah, it's basically last, maybe in the morning there, twenty eighth, I believe.
Yeah.
Twenty eighth.
All right.
It has to be done by thirty, first, thirty first.
All right, ten point three, discussion and possible action on the payment of bills for the month of April twenty nineteen.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Kay. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. Um, what is it, six, three, one, nine, zero, to the Jones County Auditor? It says re- It says re- relocate water main for ten thousand, six hundred and forty-four.
So that one actually didn't get processed yet, but, but that's related to the trail project, there was a change order, um.
Oh.
I, I think I outlined it in the memo, but, uh.
I think the most.
We, we, it would, it should, it was an item that should have been, um, addressed in the planning, but it wasn't and we the city, you know, made the request for the change order and to abandon a portion of the main. There was an additional cost, cause we had a valve that was broken. Um, ultimately, the Trail Committee came back and asked for the city to pay for that additional cost, uh, they weren't aware of it um, ahead of time and, I mean, we could have, I think finagled it a little bit, but really we I feel the city should support the second phase of the trail and if they have to pay for it, it's gonna come out of those funds, not the first phase. And so, I don't expect another, other commitment to that second phase cost and I felt this was kind of the best we could do to support that.
So the motion, Jacob, would be to approve the payment of the bills minus?
Minus that, just bec- I mean, it will come up actually later.
Later.
I would like to pay it, but it, because the county's already paid the contractor for the change order, uh, and they've submitted.
Under the REAP grant?
Under the, the grant funds for that work. We just have to figure out exactly how that payment's going to work, I mean, it still needs to go through, but it will, yeah.
So it'll come off of this one and come on to the next one? I mean, if we just remove it now?
We'll remove it, I'll void it.
It'll be voided.
If you approve the bills minus this payment, I'll void it and it'll come back again when we determine who it should be paid to.
It'll come back up again. And next month's.
But my question is, why take it off this month and put it on next month if it's gonna be there?
But we don't know how it's, if it's gonna be paid to the county?
We don't know if it needs to be paid to Jones County or to the Trail Committee or how that.
Got it. Yeah.
Alright.
Who actually is gonna receive the funds.
It's kind of, it's kind of muddy right now until like.
So it's not amount of, the amount?
It's not the dollars.
It's not the dollars, it's just who it's gonna be paid to.
Got it.
To be clear and create that good paper trail for REAP.
So, I'll re- take my motion back and make a motion that we pay the bills.
Minus the county payment.
Of the ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, blah, 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 blah.
I'm glad you asked about it, since it's completely irrelevant to any of the bills we're paying right now.
Yeah.
Like, why, why was it still even on there?
It, it was just a, a last minute, um.
We put it on there real, not realizing that, I called Janine after the fact and I said, Janine, I need a bill from the county rather than Boomerang, who was the contractor to do it, which they billed the county. I said, I need an invoice for the, for our auditors from the county to pay you back. And she said, wait a minute, I've already submitted that under the REAP grant. So then the discussion comes up on how we can make this work and who pays, when we pay that ten thousand and to whom. Because right now, we can't pay it to the county without subtracting it back from the REAP grant.
Right, so had Rich not asked that question, would we be privy to that information?
I think Jacob put that in his memo, didn't he?
He did? It was, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I know I discussed that, that item, uh.
So, it could have just been taken off.
I would have brought it up regardless of Rich hadn't brought it up, so. Cause I knew it was an issue.
Any further questions? All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Eleven point oh, and City Administrators Report.
I think the only thing I've got to be received, uh, today was the deadline for our request for qualification for architects on the uh, C D B G downtown revitalization project and we have three, we sent out thirteen, we sent the request to thirteen architects and received three back. Um, so we'll review those and try to figure out who the best to work with um, in terms of putting together our grant application.
Does that, I'm just curious, but if you send out thirteen and only got three back, is that an indication of anything? I mean, if you don't even get
Half?
Yeah, fifty percent?
I guess I'm.
I mean, is there, did Derek say, well, only, if you talk to him, I don't know if you talked to him about the architects, but if there's only three out of thirteen, that seems like a really low percentage to me.
I expected more, um uh, y- yeah, I mean, today was the deadline at noon. Um, I, I guess I haven't spoke to any others to see why, why they wouldn't submit. Either they're maybe content with their workload, I mean, that would surprise me, but.
Well, I'd be, I'd be kinda interested to hear if you reach out to a couple of them, just to kinda get some feedback. That, um, you know, maybe it's possibility that that's something we need to take another look at. If they come back and have some good reasons, then maybe we need to look at this again.
Okay. I can do that, um, that, that's pretty much all that I have.
You're done, so. Twelve point oh, Mayor and Council reports on board's admissions.
The Library Board met and the emphasis was on the movie that will be May fourth for our kids at the cost of five dollars, you need to have it by, what's the date, I've forgotten?
When, end of the day on Wednesday.
End of the day on Wednesday, everybody needs to pay their five dollars. And then on April thirtieth, there's a speaker coming in for adults, but I can't remember her topic and I don't know that I want to discuss her subject as I remember it.
The historian is Kathy Wilson, um, she lives in Marion, she's doing a presentation called Mothers of the Milky Way, which is a presentation on Victorian views on, uh, pregnancy, childbirth and early childhood rearing.
Thank you.
She's very funny, she's very, she's, she does good work.
Interesting topic too.
Yes.
So, that's everybody?
Um, I would just like to take the opportunity to remind the community that Saturday is Citywide Cleanup Day, also known as Amnesty Day. I would encourage the community to take full advantage of this, uh, as it can certainly assist with, uh, property cleanup that could be bordering on, uh, nuisance. So, the city is providing this, uh, drop off point, uh, there is restrictions, but it could certainly benefit the entire community to take advantage of this.
Thirteen point oh, Public with Business with the Council on Items Not on the Agenda.
Founder. How many, uh, nonprofit buildings have signed up for the facade program, anybody know?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, I just, I don't know if you've got a copy of the agenda, but this section really, we can't get into much discussion, it's really public comment only, um.
Oh wow, you guys are changing this up?
If, if, if we discuss items not on the agenda, that's a, that's a violation of open meeting, so.
So do I have to go up every week, every two weeks and put something in so I can get on the agenda every two weeks and ask the questions of?
If you wanna discuss that topic, yeah, you need to get it on the agenda.
Or you could call Jacob and ask him that question prior to a meeting.
I, I would rather have it in a public forum, so. Um, okay, so Jacob, June eleventh, tw- two thousand eighteen. Made a comment, I think I can quote this here all about accountability. Are you? Or can you comment on that?
I, I guess I don't know if, I guess I don't know if they said that, but, uh, I, I am in support of accountability, yes.
Because I know something's brought to your attention, I just wait to see how it's gonna be happening.
Fourteen oh, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
First by Rich, second by Rod, all those in favor signify by saying.
Yep. Aye.
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 The elbows were ready to come up.
Well, it's a good thing, because I want to.
Yes, it was just seven, so.
Uh-oh.
He's gonna pull over and wanna fill his car up with gas.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have his cell phone number?
Let's talk.